They laughed when I stood up to speak, not because my words were funny, but because I was seventy-two, holding an old photo frame instead of a PowerPoint. It was a Tuesday evening, the kind that smelled of wet coats and instant coffee in paper cups. The town hall lights flickered above the podium and every creak of my shoes on that polished floor sounded like a mistake waiting to happen. I had come to talk about a house that wasn't mine anymore, and a shoreline that no one seemed to remember. The mayor's smile was polite, one of those smiles that begins at the mouth but never reaches the eyes. Behind him, the younger committee members whispered, their phones lighting up like a row of quiet judgments. I placed the photo frame on the lectern. It held an image of Bar Harbor from nineteen seventy-eight, back when fishermen still painted their boats by hand and the lighthouse lights still worked. My late husband David had taken that picture. It was our proof that the town's boundary line had once been drawn differently before the developers moved it, a few yards at a time. "Mrs. March," the mayor said, "you've already submitted your concern in writing." "I did," I replied. "You didn't read it." A few people chuckled, the kind of laugh that says we're done humoring you. But I wasn't there for their approval. I was there for memory, for truth that doesn't expire just because the people who lived it have grown old. The microphone hissed. I could see my reflection trembling in the frame's glass, gray hair, thin wrists, a woman who still believed that facts meant something. "Does your sibling ever do that?" Our day and Taylor covered many different genres. "Do you have evidence this map is inaccurate?" the clerk asked without looking up. Held the frame higher, "You're standing on it." The laughter came louder this time. Phones came up to record because everyone loves a harmless spectacle. The sound of my heartbeat mixed with the distant roll of thunder outside. That was the moment I understood something important. They didn't just change the map. They'd erased the memory of the people who lived on it. And maybe that's the cruelest kind of theft. When I left the hall that night, the rain had turned into mist and the harbor lights glowed faintly through it. I carried the photo frame close to my chest, as if it could still keep me safe. But deep down, I already knew this wasn't just about a map. It was about dignity, mine, and everyone who still believed the truth could be heard through the noise. So I whispered to myself, "Eleanor, how many times must you be dismissed before you finally shout?" The wind off the harbor didn't answer. It just carried my reflection back at me through the fog. Older, smaller, but still standing. The morning after the meeting smelled of sea salt and burnt toast. I woke before dawn, the way I used to when David went fishing. Old habits never retire. They just linger, waiting for something familiar to return. The kettle took its time to boil, humming like an old friend with a secret. I sat by the window, tracing the outline of the harbor through the fog, wondering if the town even noticed what it had lost. On the table, the same photo frame from last night sat next to my reading glasses. The glass had cracked slightly from the cold air outside, a spider web across David's sky. I should have been careful, but in truth, I'd been trembling when I brought it home. Maybe I'd held it too tight. Maybe some part of me wanted proof that even pictures could fracture under pressure. Every morning, I read the community bulletin, half news, half gossip. Today's headline wasn't about the harbor dispute or the council's silence. It was about a seafood festival. "Bar Harbor to celebrate growth and innovation," it said. Growth, a polite word for forgetting. My neighbor Mabel Ruiz waved from her porch. She used to march beside me during school board petitions. Now she only waved. That's how distance grows in small towns, quietly, through the simple choice not to walk across the street anymore. I poured tea and opened my notebook, writing the words, "They laughed." Then I crossed them out. Laughter wasn't the wound. It was the symptom. The wound was invisibility. The phone rang. June Patel's number flashed, the reporter from the Coastline Chronicle. "Mrs. March," she said, voice brisk, professional, the kind that measures its sympathy carefully. "I was at the meeting. You handled yourself well." "Well," I repeated, surprised. "They treated me like a story that already ended." She hesitated. "Actually, I think your story might just be starting. I'd like to interview you about the old boundaries." I wasn't sure if she wanted the truth or just the spectacle. Still, I agreed. Pride disguised itself as purpose. After we hung up, I looked at the cracked photo frame again. For a moment, I saw my reflection split in two, past Eleanor and present Eleanor, staring at each other, both tired of being politely ignored. The day stretched long. I walked to the post office, the same route I'd taken for forty years. The new café on the corner played loud music and smelled of cinnamon lattes instead of fishnets. People I'd known for decades passed by without slowing. One man nodded vaguely, the way you nod to an antique you don't plan to buy. Inside the post office, the clerk smiled thinly. "Heard about the meeting," she said. "You're brave, Mrs. March. Most people your age just let things go." "I suppose I never learned how," I answered. But even as I said it, I wondered if maybe I should have. Would peace come easier if I stopped fighting ghosts of geography? Or would silence simply finish what erasure began? A delivery slip waited in my box, parcel from the State Archives Department. I hadn't expected it so soon. The documents I'd requested, old maritime maps and zoning drafts, proof that someone had redrawn the harbor line years after the public vote. I signed the slip, my hand shaking. "Heavy envelope," the clerk said. "You must have a good reason." "I do," I told her, "but no one seems to think so." Back home, I opened the package carefully, page by page, each map smelling faintly of dust and ocean. Lines blurred by time, corners soft from handling. I found one marked nineteen seventy-nine, the same year David took the photo. The town's property boundary hugged the shoreline tightly, protecting the fishermen's docks. The new map from nineteen ninety-two showed the line pushed inland, erasing public access to the pier. That single adjustment had let a developer claim half the harbor front. I felt my pulse in my throat. David had died that same year. I remembered him complaining about new survey stakes near the lighthouse, his voice rough with disbelief. He'd written a letter to the council, but no one replied. I spread the maps on the floor. The photo frame sat beside them, the crack running across the horizon like a scar that refused to fade. Outside, fog thin to drizzle. I stepped onto the porch, breathing in the salt air, letting it sting my lungs. Across the street, Mabel Ruiz watched from her window. She didn't wave this time. I wanted to knock on her door to ask if she remembered the fishermen's protest, the one where we all stood shoulder to shoulder. But I didn't. Some memories are heavy. Others are convenient to forget. A gull screeched overhead, breaking my thoughts. I turned back to the maps, feeling both older and oddly awake. Was I chasing justice or just refusing to accept the quiet end of relevance? The question hung between the ticking clock and the sea's endless hiss. By late afternoon, the light had turned silver, soft on the photo frame's crack. I cleaned the glass gently with a cloth, whispering an apology to David. "You were right," I said. "They did change everything." A knock came at the door. June Patel, notebook in hand, eyes bright with cautious curiosity. "I came sooner," she said. "People are talking about you," half mocking, half curious. "That's progress," I replied. She smiled, almost. "May I see the photo?" I handed it over, watching her expression change. She noticed the lighthouse in the background, the faint outline of where the pier once extended. "This could matter," she murmured. "Could," I said. "If anyone still cares." She looked up. "Then let's make them care." For the first time in weeks, I felt something shift inside me. Not triumph, not hope exactly, but the faint, steady pulse of purpose returning. "This is Barlatine Lee, former intern and cause quest personal instructor." Still, when she left, the house felt too quiet. I sat with the photo frame in my lap, tracing its edges, wondering what line I'd have to cross next and what part of myself I might lose doing it. "Am I fighting for truth?" I whispered, "or for the comfort of being seen?" The fog outside swallowed the question whole, and by evening, only the sound of rain answered back. The next morning, I woke to the sound of the mail slot clattering shut. A single envelope landed on the mat, thick, official-looking. For a moment, I thought it might be another bill, another reminder that time has its own way of collecting debts. But when I picked it up, the town seal stared back at me in neat blue ink. Inside was a notice of review, the polite bureaucratic phrase for "we're coming to see what you've been digging into." My heart quickened. They were sending someone from the land committee to clarify my documentation. I could already hear their tone. Gentle dismissal, paper smiles, maybe a touch of condescension disguised as concern. The kettle began to whistle. I poured the water, half listening, half rehearsing what I might say. There's an art to being heard when people have already decided you're irrelevant. You must speak softly enough to sound reasonable, but firmly enough to leave a mark. June Patel called just after eight. "You were right," she said without preamble. "The zoning documents from ninety-two are missing from the online archives. Someone took them down recently." That sentence lingered in the air like fog, refusing to lift. "Convenient," I said. "Or strategic," she replied. "I'm writing a piece, but I need corroboration. Would you let me record an interview?" I hesitated. "There's power in silence, but also danger in it." "You can record," I said. "But don't make me a spectacle." "I won't." "I think this is about more than property lines. It always was." By mid-morning, the doorbell rang. A man in a crisp gray jacket stood outside, clipboard in hand, eyes scanning me, as if assessing the value of my resistance. "Mrs. March," he said. "I'm Cole Turner from the land committee." He couldn't have been older than thirty, the kind of youth that mistakes politeness for integrity. "May I come in?" he asked. I motioned him toward the living room. The maps were still spread across the table, corners weighted by books. The cracked photo frame rested in the center like a silent witness. He looked at it briefly, then focused on the documents. "You've gathered quite a collection," he said. "But these versions are outdated." "Outdated doesn't mean irrelevant," I answered. He smiled, the patient kind they must teach in training seminars. "Sometimes change is progress, Mrs. March." "And sometimes," I said, "it's theft." His pen froze mid-note. I watched his face shift, the way young men shift when confronted by certainty they don't yet understand. "I'll review these," he said finally. "But I can't promise anything." "You don't need to promise," I told him. "Just look." He nodded and left, leaving a faint scent of rain and bureaucracy behind. Later, when June arrived, her camera slung around her shoulder, the house felt smaller. "He came, didn't he?" she asked. "Yes, young polite and already convinced I'm chasing nostalgia." She smiled faintly. "That's what they always think before the truth embarrasses them." We went through the photos together, one by one. Some showed the harbor before the corporate docks replaced the fishermen's shacks. Others captured faces long gone, men who worked the nets by hand, women who mended sails and argued about tides like scholars. "This one," she said, pointing to a picture of David beside the old pier, "this tells the story." "It tells his story," I corrected softly. "But maybe that's enough." We decided to meet again at the archive room later that week. I needed to find one more document, the public notice from the council meeting in ninety-two. Without it, my case was memory against money. That night, I sat alone, the rain steady on the roof. I remembered the day the pier closed, how David had stood by the lighthouse, his boots sinking into the mud. "They're cutting the town off from its own sea," he'd said. I'd laughed then, thought he was exaggerating. Now, decades later, his voice echoed like prophecy. I opened the old radio on the shelf, the same one we used to listen to during storms. Static filled the room, the kind that sounds like ghosts trying to speak. I turned the dial slowly until a local station emerged, the mayor's voice, confident and rehearsed. He was announcing a partnership with a private firm for harbor redevelopment. Turned off the radio before the applause came. So it was happening again. The boundary they stole once, they'd steal again. And this time, no one would even bother laughing. They'd just applaud progress. I pulled out a notepad and began writing, "Timeline of displacement." The words looked too academic, too clean. I crossed them out and wrote instead, "How we vanished." The next day, when I arrived at the archive, June was waiting. The clerk behind the counter recognized me instantly and frowned. "Access to the nineteen ninety-two council minutes requires written approval," she said. "I submitted that last week," I replied. She shuffled papers. "Nothing here." June's brow furrowed. "Is it possible the files were reclassified?" The woman didn't answer. She just looked uncomfortable, the way people do when truth knocks and they've been told not to open the door. We left with nothing but suspicion and damp coats. Outside, the wind howled off the harbor. I watched the tide rise, gray and relentless. "Eleanor," June said gently, "they're hiding something." "I know," I said. "And they think I'll stop looking." Back home, I found a note slipped under my door. No signature, just block letters on thin paper. "Drop it, Mrs. March. You're embarrassing yourself." I stared at it for a long time, then folded it carefully and placed it behind the cracked photo frame. Evidence doesn't always shout. Sometimes, it whispers. That night, the house felt heavier, as if the walls were listening. The air smelled faintly of salt and old paper. I couldn't sleep. Every time I closed my eyes, I saw the mayor's smirk, the clerk's nervous glance, the erased lines on the map. Maybe this was the real reason they laughed at me, not because they doubted my memory, but because they feared what remembering might uncover. As dawn crept through the blinds, I whispered to the quiet house. "What if I'm the only one who still sees the line they moved?" The sea answered with another wave crashing against the rocks, steady and merciless, as if to say, "Then you'll just have to draw it again." Two days after the anonymous note, the town council released a public statement. It appeared in the Bar Harbor Gazette, between a recipe for chowder and an ad for real estate. It read, "Concerns about the historic harbor line are based on misinterpreted personal materials and do not reflect verified records." Misinterpreted personal materials. That meant my husband's photograph, my voice, my memory. I stared at the headline, the teacup trembling in my hand. For years, I'd believed dignity was something you could protect with civility. Reasoned words, measured tone, clean evidence. But this wasn't a misunderstanding. It was a rewriting. By noon, people had stopped meeting my eyes in the grocery store. I could hear the shift in tone, pity mixed with amusement. "She's obsessed," someone whispered near the bread aisle. "Poor thing, probably lonely." I wanted to shout, to hold up the photo frame right there between the milk and the cereal and say, "This is your town. You're standing on what you've forgotten." But I didn't. I paid for my groceries, smiled too politely, and left before the tears came. When I got home, June was waiting on my porch, her face pale from the wind. "You saw the statement?" she asked. "I did." "They're calling your photo unreliable. The mayor said you might have misdated it." "David's handwriting is on the back," I said. "He dated everything. It's how he lived, orderly, meticulous." June sighed. "They're not arguing facts. They're building doubt." I sank into the porch chair. Doubt spreads faster than truth. It's cheaper to maintain. That evening, a soft knock echoed through the door. Cole Turner again, the young man from the land committee. His expression was uncomfortable, the look of someone who's been told to apologize for something he didn't do. "I wanted to speak with you privately," he said. "Off the record?" I led him in. The maps were still laid out on the table, the photo frame at the center like a compass that refused to lie. "Mrs. March," he began, "some of your documents, well, they raise questions. But I've been told to advise you to let the matter rest." "By whom?" I asked. He hesitated. "The mayor's office." "So it's coordinated." "I wouldn't say that." "Then what would you say?" He looked down at the cracked photo frame. "That you might be right, but being right won't help you." It wasn't a threat, not exactly. It was a warning wrapped in sincerity. "Tell me," I said quietly, "when did truth become a liability in this town?" He had no answer. After he left, I poured myself tea that had long gone cold. I tried to focus on small things, washing the cup, folding the dish towel, feeding the stray cat that sometimes appeared by the porch. Mundane acts of control in a world quickly erasing my grip on reality. The phone rang again, Mabel Ruiz this time. Her voice wavered, soft but cautious. "Eleanor, dear, maybe it's time to stop. People are talking. The paper made you sound well." "Unstable. I've been called worse," I said. "I know, but this town eats its own when embarrassed. Don't give them reason." "I'm not the one rewriting history, Mabel." Silence stretched, thick as fog. Then quietly, she said, "They're saying the developer donated to the library fund, the one named after David." The words hit me harder than the letter or the laughter. "The library, my husband's memorial, built on the promise of preserving community knowledge, now financed by the same people who buried our truth." After the call, I sat motionless, the ticking clock louder than the sea. I picked up the photo frame again. The crack had deepened, spreading like a fault line across the lighthouse. "David," I whispered, "did I make a mistake bringing this up again?" The wind pressed against the windowpane like an old friend trying to come in. I closed my eyes, hearing the distant echo of that town meeting laughter. Polite, rehearsed, safe behind ignorance. Later that night, I heard something else, footsteps on the porch. I turned off the light, heart hammering. A shadow moved past the window, then disappeared. When I opened the door, a fresh copy of the Gazette lay on the steps, its front page folded neatly to my photograph, now printed with the caption, "Local resident misremembers history." No signature, no byline. I tore the page in half and threw it into the fire. The paper curled, blackened, and turned to ash. For a brief, wicked moment, I understood why people choose anger over grief. Anger feels alive. When the flames died, I felt something else, exhaustion, a bone-deep fatigue that settled in the quiet corners of the house. I sat with it for a long time, listening to the waves crash beyond the fog. At midnight, the old radio flickered on by itself, static humming through the room. I didn't move. A faint voice, familiar, official, came through. The mayor's announcement from earlier in the week. Only now, beneath his words, a second voice whispered faintly, overlapping. David's voice. I froze. The tape was one of his old recordings, accidentally mixed into the local broadcast frequency years ago. His voice was calm, factual, describing the original survey line near the lighthouse, the same evidence I'd been dismissed for citing. I pressed record on my phone, shaking. Proof, real proof. But before I could breathe, the signal cut out, replaced by static again. Was it coincidence? Or had someone broadcast it intentionally to rattle me? The next morning, the radio was silent, and I wasn't sure if I'd imagined the whole thing. Maybe the mind, desperate for justice, starts inventing echoes when no one else listens. I wrote in my notebook, "Even the air lies when power tells it to." Then below that, "Find the recording." Outside, the fog had thickened again, erasing the edges of everything. And for the first time since the meeting, I wondered, not if I'd win, but if the truth could even survive the noise designed to drown it. By Thursday, the sea had turned slate gray. The gulls screamed louder than usual, as if warning of something I couldn't see yet. The air smelled of rust and kelp, and I knew a storm was coming, not just from the weather, but from the way the town felt. Too quiet, too watchful. June texted that morning, "Meet me at the library at two. Bring the photo." The irony wasn't lost on me. The library named after my husband, now funded by the very people we were exposing. I wrapped the photo frame in an old scarf and slipped it into my tote bag, careful not to let the crack deepen. The glass was fragile, but so was truth when handled roughly. The library stood near the edge of the harbor, its wooden sign freshly varnished, the new plaque reading, "The March Memorial Learning Center, renovated twenty eighteen." I touched the metal surface. The letters of David's name were cold. Inside, the air smelled of coffee, paper, and a hint of fresh paint. The young librarian glanced up, her smile polite but strained. "Good afternoon, Mrs. March." "I heard about the Gazette article." "So did everyone," I said softly. She hesitated, then lowered her voice. "I just wanted to say, I think they went too far. My father remembers the old boundary. He said you were right." Her words warmed me more than the heater at the entrance ever could. "Would he talk to me?" "Maybe," she said. "But not on record." I smiled. "I understand. Truth frightens the comfortable." In the back study room, June was waiting, laptop open, pages scattered across the table. She looked tired, the kind of tired that comes from pushing against polite censorship. "I pulled the archived newsletters from nineteen ninety-two," she said. "You were right again." There was a brief mention of a land hearing that year, but no attached minutes. "So the erasure started in plain sight?" She nodded. "We might still find the missing minutes in microfilm. But I need access to the basement archives, and the mayor's office controls that. The mayor won't grant it." "Not if we ask nicely," she said, smiling faintly. "But if we make it public?" I frowned. "You mean leak it?" "Not leak, illuminate." June showed me a draft headline, "Where Did Bar Harbor's Harbor Go?" It was sharp, quiet in tone but loaded with implication. I looked at her, weighing the risk. "If we publish that, they'll retaliate." "DRDR," she said. She had a point. "We spent hours cross-referencing photos, aligning..." We spent hours cross-referencing photos, aligning maps, matching shadows and structures, anything that proved the pier's boundary had once extended farther into public land. Every detail mattered. Even the way the light fell in David's photograph told the truth. The lighthouse lantern's position meant the pier couldn't have stood where the new map claimed it did. By evening, my head ached from squinting. The world blurred between memory and fact, the way truth often does when overexamined. "Eleanor," June said quietly, "why does this matter so much to you?" I paused. "Because when you let a lie like this settle, it becomes history. And history decides who matters." She nodded, and something in her expression softened, the skepticism giving way to solidarity. When I returned home, the rain had started. The radio on my counter was silent again, as if waiting. I turned the dial slowly, hoping for the strange echo of David's voice to return. Instead, I caught a public broadcast, the mayor announcing a new heritage festival, celebrating Bar Harbor's enduring legacy. I laughed aloud. "Enduring legacy," I muttered, "of omission." As I walked through the kitchen, something glittered on the floor, a small shard of glass. My heart sank. The photo frame had cracked further. I picked it up carefully, running my finger along the break. It cut me, just slightly, a thin red line across my fingertip. Pain is proof too, I thought. I bandaged the finger, then placed the photo upright again. A storm was hitting the harbor now, wind pounding against the windows, the kind that makes old houses creak like living things. I sat at the table, the light flickering, and began to write a letter to the mayor. I didn't write to convince him. I wrote to document. "Dear Mayor Huxley," I began, "you once told me the past belongs in the museum. I agree. That's why I'm putting it there myself." The next morning, I walked to the local maritime museum. The curator, a man named Reed, was polishing display glass when I arrived. I showed him the photograph, the maps, the letter. His eyes widened as he studied them. "This is significant," he said. "The harbor layout here, it's different from our current record." "Then keep it," I said. "If I disappear from the minutes, at least this won't." He nodded, carefully storing the photo in a protective sleeve. "You sure you want to give this up?" "Yes," I said. "Truth should belong to everyone." As I stepped outside, the rain had stopped. The sky had turned the color of pewter, heavy and calm. For a moment, I felt lighter, as if the act of giving the photo away had transferred its weight from me to the world. But when I got home, the front door was ajar. My heart tightened. Inside, the maps were scattered, the drawers half-open. Someone had been there. The only thing missing was my notebook, the one with all my notes and timelines. I sat down hard on the chair, hands trembling. The silence of the room felt wrong, hollow, invaded. I whispered to no one, "They didn't just move the boundary again. They've stepped into my life." That night, I couldn't sleep. The sea was restless, the wind sharp against the eaves. I replayed every sound, every creak, wondering if they'd return. And for the first time, I wasn't sure whether I was building proof or building danger. The morning after the break-in, I found myself standing in the middle of the living room, barefoot, staring at the open drawers like they might apologize. Every sound in the house felt amplified, the hum of the refrigerator, the drip of the faucet, the faint tick of the wall clock, counting the moments since my certainty started to fracture. I'd always believed the truth had a kind of gravity, that once revealed, it would pull people toward it. But what if the world had learned to float above it instead? The police officer who came to take the report looked barely old enough to shave. His badge gleamed, his notebook crisp. He wrote quickly while I spoke, but his eyes kept wandering around the room, taking in the stacks of papers, the maps pinned to the wall, the empty frame on the table. "Nothing else taken?" he asked. "Just my notebook," I said, "the one with my notes about the harbor boundary." He nodded politely, though I could already read the dismissal forming in his head. "Could be kids. We've had a few petty thefts." "Kids don't steal notebooks about zoning law," I replied. He smiled, in that professional way meant to calm hysterics. "Sometimes they take things to scare folks. You know how rumors spread." "I do," I said softly. "I just never expected them to spread faster than evidence." He handed me the case slip. "We'll file it. You'll get a call if we find anything." He wouldn't. We both knew it. After he left, I closed the door and leaned against it, feeling the weight of being unheard. Somewhere outside, a dog barked, a car door slammed. Life continued with its usual indifference. I wanted to scream, but the walls would only echo it back to me. Sat at the table and stared at the spot where my notebook used to be. Without it, my proof felt suddenly fragile, scattered between my memory and a few aging photographs. The phone rang once, twice, three times before I answered, June's voice, urgent. "Eleanor, are you all right?" "They broke in," I said. Silence, then. "Oh my god, are you hurt?" "No, just shaken. They took my notes." "D." "I don't know, but someone wanted my story to end quietly." June exhaled. "You can rewrite it. We'll reconstruct the timeline." I wanted to believe her. I wanted to believe a lot of things, that justice listens, that effort matters, that memory counts as evidence. But the truth is, I was tired, tired in a way that sleep doesn't fix. That evening, I walked to the harbor. The storm had passed, leaving puddles that reflected the faint light of the street lamps. The air smelled of salt and iron, sharp and cold. I stood near the old fence, the one separating the public walkway from the new development. A private property sign swung gently in the wind, its chain creaking like a taunt. David used to say boundaries were meant to protect people. Lately, I wondered if they were built to keep truth contained. I sat on a bench, facing the water. The sky was low, bruised purple. Across the bay, the new harbor lights glowed sterile white. Clean, profitable, indifferent. For a moment, I thought of walking away, selling the house, leaving the town to its selective memory. Maybe move inland, somewhere no one knew me as the woman who couldn't let go. But then I remembered the librarian's words, "My father remembers the old boundary," and June's tired determination. And the little girl I once was, standing beside my father on this same pier, watching him draw the shoreline in the sand to show me how tides change everything. Except the truth of where they start. I picked up a stone and threw it into the dark water. The splash echoed longer than I expected. It sounded like a heartbeat, distant but steady. Back home, I lit a candle. The power had flickered out twice that evening, and I didn't trust the electricity to keep its promises. The flicker of flame cast the cracked photo frame in golden light. David's face, half-shadow, half-memory, watched me. "What would you do if you were here?" I asked aloud. If he answered? It was through silence, the kind that pushes you to find your own resolve. I sat down with a fresh notebook. Blank pages can be cruel. They ask for belief before they give you anything back. My hand hesitated, then moved. I wrote, "They took my notes, but not my story." Below that, start again, from memory, because memory is where they can't trespass. Hours passed. The candle melted to a stub. Outside, the sea murmured like an old witness refusing to forget. I redrew the harbor from recollection, every dock and lamppost, every contour of the coastline. It wasn't perfect, but it was mine. When I finally stopped, dawn was breaking, pale light seeping through the curtains, turning the air a soft silver. My eyes ached, but my chest felt lighter. I realized something then. Maybe proof isn't what wins. Maybe persistence does. As the kettle began to whistle, I poured myself tea and whispered to the empty room. "You wanted me quiet. You should have taken my voice instead." The radio clicked on by itself again, static, then silence, then faintly, David's voice once more, a single word cutting through. "Keep." It could have been coincidence. It could have been the past, reminding me that resistance runs in echoes. I closed my eyes, smiled tiredly, and said back to the empty air, "I will." And for the first time in weeks, the laughter I heard in my memory didn't sting. It fueled me. The morning began with wind, sharp, unrelenting, the kind that makes even the sea sound impatient. The curtains swayed against the cold glass, and I could smell the harbor through the cracks of the old window frame. It carried that metallic scent of rain, mixed with salt and something older, something restless. I had barely slept. My new notebook lay open on the table, pages filled with late-night scrawlings that looked more like survival notes than research. Each line began with, "Remember." Remember the pier. Remember the petition. Remember the laughter that tried to erase it all. When the doorbell rang, I half-expected another anonymous note, but it was June, wrapped in her green raincoat, hair damp from the fog. She didn't wait for an invitation, just stepped in, holding two coffees and an expression I hadn't seen before. "Resolve." "Someone mailed this to the paper," she said, handing me a plain envelope, no return address. Inside was a photocopy, grainy, old, but unmistakable. It was the missing council record from nineteen ninety-two, a typed agenda from the land hearing that had vanished from every archive. And there, in the margin, a handwritten note in familiar looping penmanship. "Boundary adjusted per developer request. Signed, D. March." My knees went weak. "David's signature," I whispered. "He submitted this before he died." June nodded. "Whoever sent this wanted you to have it. Maybe someone inside the committee who still believes in the truth." The air shifted between us. For weeks, I'd felt like I was fighting ghosts, but suddenly the ghosts were sending reinforcement. June leaned over the table. "If we can verify this, we have enough for publication. I can run the story in tomorrow's edition. But I need your consent and the photo." I hesitated, glancing at the cracked frame. The thought of giving it up again tightened my chest. "Every time I let it go, something breaks." June's voice softened. "Maybe it's breaking open this time." That line sat with me. Maybe breaking isn't always destruction. Sometimes it's the sound of something being freed. I placed the frame gently in her hands. "Use it," I said. "But tell the story right. Don't make me a headline. Make me a mirror." She smiled, but there was worry in her eyes. "You'll get backlash. They'll double down." "Davey already took my piece," I said. "They can't take my proof." After she left, I brewed tea and sat in silence, the steady hiss of rain filling the space she'd left behind. I should have felt triumphant, but victory, when it comes late in life, often feels suspicious, like an echo you're not sure belongs to you. By evening, the wind grew stronger. I turned on the old radio, half-expecting static, half-hoping for David's voice again. Instead, it was the local station, a soft-voiced anchor reading headlines, my breath caught when I heard. "Investigative report to publish tomorrow, questioning the authenticity of Bar Harbor's boundary records." It was happening. I pressed my palms together, whispering, "We're finally being heard, but hope is a fragile visitor." The phone rang again, not June this time, but Cole Turner. His voice was low, urgent. "Mrs. March, you didn't get this from me, but the mayor knows about the article. He's calling an emergency council session tonight." I froze. "To deny it?" "To bury it," he said. "They'll claim the document's fake." "I tried to stop it, but..." He stopped mid-sentence, the line filling with silence, then a whisper. "Be careful who knocks on your door tonight." The line went dead. I turned off the lights, heart pounding. The house felt suddenly smaller, like the walls were listening again. I checked the locks twice, then sat by the window, watching the fog swallow the street. Somewhere down by the harbor, a car engine idled, headlights off. I could see the faint outline of figures inside, unmoving, watching. It wasn't fear that gripped me now. It was clarity. If they were watching, it meant they were afraid too. I went to the bookshelf and pulled out an old wooden box. David's. Inside were cassette tapes, his field recordings from years of documenting the harbor tides. I slid one into the recorder and pressed play. The tape hissed, then began to speak. His voice, calm, steady, describing, "Harbor Section B nineteen ninety-two." The same year, the same record. And at the end of the tape, his voice said, "submitted to the council for permanent record." Proof, not just paper, but voice. I copied the tape using my phone, sending the file to June with a short message, "They can erase ink, not sound." Then I sat back, trembling as the storm outside broke open. Rain lashed the windows, thunder rolled over the harbor like the earth itself was remembering. For the first time in months, I smiled, not because I was safe, but because I finally understood the fight. It wasn't about winning a case. It was about refusing to vanish quietly. I lit a candle, watching the flame bend in the draft. "You were right, David," I whispered. "Truth doesn't need permission." The radio crackled again, this time, no static, just the sound of a weather warning, followed by silence. Then, faintly, a newscaster's voice reading an early online excerpt from June's article. "Decades of civic omission come to light as historic evidence surfaces in Bar Harbor dispute." I closed my eyes, relief and terror intertwined like twin tides. Outside, lightning flashed, illuminating the harbor fence, the old lighthouse, and for one split second, the truth in full view. They could deny it tomorrow. They could call it misremembering again, but tonight, even the storm bore witness. The storm had passed, but its echo lingered. The next morning, the town felt washed clean, deceptively calm, like a face freshly powdered to hide the bruise underneath. I woke to the sound of gulls and my phone vibrating across the table. When I answered, June's voice came through, breathless. "It's out. The article's live." I opened my laptop. There it was, black letters against white light. Where did Bar Harbor's harbor go? My name wasn't in the headline, but my story pulsed through every line. David's photo, the scanned map, the council minutes with his signature, even the audio link to his old tape. For a moment, I just stared. I'd spent months fighting for someone to listen, and now they were. The article had gone local viral overnight, picked up by the regional paper, shared across social media. "Eleanor," June said, "you did it." I wanted to believe her. I wanted to let I wanted to believe her, I wanted to let pride wash away the exhaustion. But the sea outside my window said otherwise, calm on the surface, but the tide had already begun to turn. By noon, the mayor's office issued a statement. The so-called evidence presented by Mrs. March and Ms. Patel has been digitally manipulated. We are consulting legal counsel regarding defamation. Defamation, such a tidy word for fear. The comments under the online article were a battleground. Half the town cheered for accountability, the other half mocked me. The conspiracy grandma, ghost chaser, crazy widow who misses the past. June called again that afternoon. They're threatening to sue the paper, my editors getting cold feet. Let them, I said, lawsuits have discovery. But even as I said it, my hands shook, not from fear, from fatigue. You don't realize how much strength silence costs. Until you finally start to speak. Four o'clock, the mayor appeared on the local news, standing before the town hall. His tone was calm, practiced, his eyes glinting like a man who still believed in the comfort of his own version. Bar Harbor remains committed to transparency, he said, and we will not allow misinformation to damage our community's reputation. Behind him, someone laughed, the same kind of laugh I'd heard that first night in the meeting hall. Only this time, it came from the crowd outside, their signs reading, "Truth belongs to everyone," and, "Bring back the pier." June texted me a photo of the protest. Dozens of people, young and old, gathered in the drizzle, holding printouts of David's photograph. For a moment, my heart lifted, but within an hour, the town's Facebook page filled with doctored images. My photo edited to make me look confused, hands raised mid-sentence, eyes unfocused. A thousand digital sneers replacing the laughter that once echoed only in a single room. Mabel Ruiz came by that evening, her coat buttoned up tight. She didn't knock, she just opened the door like she used to when friendship didn't need permission. They've gone too far, she said. Half the church groups talking about you, some think you're brave. The others think you've lost your mind. Maybe both are true, I said quietly. She shook her head. You should leave town for a while, let it settle. I've spent a lifetime settling, I said, this is the first thing I've stood for that doesn't fold under politeness. Mabel sighed, eyes glassy. They vandalized your husband's memorial sign at the library. Scratched out his name. I closed my eyes. The ache that followed wasn't rage, it was something deeper, quieter, almost tender. The understanding that truth always exacts payment in personal currency. After she left, I walked to the harbor alone. The protest had ended, leaving behind soggy flyers and footprints pressed into the mud. The lighthouse loomed in the fog like a guilty witness. I found David's old bench and sat there, feeling the mist settle on my skin. The air was heavy with brine and memory. I thought of his voice on the tape, that single word, keep. I pulled my phone from my coat pocket and replayed it. The sound was faint beneath the wind, but it steadied me. Keep. That's when headlights appeared behind me, a black car, the same one I'd seen idling before. A man stepped out, tall, coat collar turned up, face shadowed. He didn't approach right away, just stood by the car, watching. Then he called out, Mrs. March, you've caused quite a stir. The voice was familiar. Cole Turner. Shouldn't you be at work? I asked, my voice steady, though my pulse wasn't. I'm not here officially, he said, walking closer. I came to warn you. The council's moving to file a restraining order. To keep you from contacting the media. I laughed, a short, bitter sound. They want to silence a seventy-two-year-old woman with a notebook and a photograph? He didn't answer. The wind whipped his hair across his forehead. They think you're dangerous because people are listening now. And you, I asked, what do you think? He looked down, then back at me. I think truth scares people who build their lives on illusion. For the first time, I saw the tremor in his hand as he handed me a small flash drive. This fell off the records room computer last night, he said. It has the metadata for the old maps, timestamps showing when the files were edited, and by whom. I stared at it, stunned. You're risking your job. He smiled faintly, maybe I've started remembering which side I'm supposed to be on. Before I could thank him, he turned and walked back to the car, vanishing into the fog. I sat there, the flash drive warm in my palm, the lighthouse blinking behind me like a heartbeat in the dark. That night, I uploaded the files to June. The evidence was complete now, paper, photo, voice, and digital record. When I finally closed my laptop, the house was quiet, too quiet. A note slipped under my door again, this time handwritten in ink instead of block letters. You don't know what you've started. I held it up to the candlelight and whispered, yes, I do. Because for the first time, I wasn't fighting for the past anymore. I was fighting for the right to remember, and that, I realized, was far more dangerous. The night before the council hearing felt longer than winter. Time stretched thin, each minute humming like a wire pulled too tight. Outside, the fog rolled in from the harbor, swallowing the street lamps, one by one, until the whole town looked like it was holding its breath. I made tea, though I barely tasted it. Every motion felt rehearsed, the clink of the spoon, the slow swirl of steam, the way my hand trembled just slightly before steadying itself again. The cracked photo frame sat at the center of the table, the way it had from the beginning, its spiderweb fracture catching the candlelight like a scar that refused to fade. Tomorrow, I would stand before them again, the same hall, the same faces, maybe even the same laughter. But this time, I wouldn't be bringing a plea. I'd be bringing proof. June called just after eight, her voice was hushed but steady. The article's still climbing, regional outlets picked it up. You're trending, Eleanor. I smiled faintly, seventy-two years old and finally viral, that's a strange sentence. She laughed softly. The mayor can't contain it anymore. There'll be cameras tomorrow, they're calling it an open forum. Good, I said, let them film the truth for once. Are you sure you're ready for that? No one's ever ready for humiliation, I replied, but it's less frightening the second time. He said goodnight, her voice lingering in my ear long after the call ended. For all her youth, June had given me something I hadn't realized I'd lost. The belief that courage can still matter, even when time insists it doesn't. I walked through the house, turning off lights one by one. Each room felt like a memory preserved in amber, the faint smell of David's books, the indentation of his chair, the framed postcard he'd sent me years ago from Portland that read, "Truth float." In the hallway, the floorboard creaked, the way it always did, and for an instant, I felt like he was still here, just beyond sight, just beyond reach. I sat at the desk and opened a drawer I hadn't touched since his death. Inside lay his old compass, tarnished but still intact, the same one he'd used when mapping the harbor's depth. I turned it over in my palm, its needle twitching toward true north, as if reminding me what direction still meant. I tucked it into my coat pocket, a charm, a memory, an anchor. Then I took out the letter I'd written earlier, my statement for the hearing, short, clear, almost defiant. You can silence a person, it said, but not a shoreline. It keeps returning with every tide. I folded it carefully, slid it into an envelope marked to be read if interrupted. Experience teaches you contingency plans. When the power flickered, I didn't move. The candlelight trembled, but didn't die. In that wavering glow, the photo frame looked almost alive, the crack splitting the horizon line right through the lighthouse beam, like a wound in the town's memory itself. I whispered to it, tomorrow, they'll see you for what you are, not nostalgia, not madness, but evidence. The house answered in creaks and sighs. Around midnight, I heard a car outside again, headlights lingered at the corner, cutting through the mist. I didn't hide this time, I opened the curtain and stared straight at them. The car idled for a moment, then turned away. I felt no fear, only exhaustion sharpened into purpose. There's a kind of strength that comes after you've lost everything you were supposed to protect. It's quieter, colder, but it doesn't bend. I sat back down and began writing one final entry in my new notebook. If tomorrow fails, memory will not. If I fall, let the tide speak for me. When I put down the pen, my hand cramped. I massaged it gently, then reached for the radio, turning the dial until I found static. I don't know why I did it. Maybe because silence felt too final. Through the fuzz of white noise, I heard a faint hum, the sound of a boat horn somewhere far offshore. It felt like a message, even if it wasn't one. Keep, I whispered back, repeating David's word. I'm keeping. I checked my coat once more, the compass, the flash drive Cole had given me, the envelope for the mayor. Everything was ready, everything except peace. The clock struck two, the harbor wind pressed against the window again, carrying salt and cold and the sound of something vast moving in the dark. I thought about all the people who'd tried to quiet me, the clerk who refused my forms, the mayor who smiled like a mask, the neighbors who turned away because it was easier than choosing sides. But I also thought of June, of the young librarian whose father remembered, of Cole risking his job for truth, of Mabel's reluctant friendship holding steady through shame. The town wasn't one thing, it was a tug of war between memory and denial, and I had simply refused to let go of my end of the rope. Before bed, I placed the photo frame on the windowsill so that the first light of morning would hit it, a symbolic gesture, maybe. But symbols are what truth uses when words fail. I whispered one last question into the quiet. What if I stand there tomorrow and no one listens? The wind rattled the pane softly, then stilled, as if the harbor itself were pausing to listen. I blew out the candle, letting the smoke curl upward like a promise. Somewhere out there, the tide turned again, pulling the sea back toward the line they had moved. And for the first time in months, I felt certain, by this time tomorrow, the world would remember what they tried to erase. The morning of the hearing broke cold and bright, the kind of sharp sunlight that makes everything look too honest. The fog had cleared overnight, leaving the harbor bare, exposed, as if the sea itself were preparing to testify. I dressed carefully, not out of vanity, but ritual, the gray wool coat David bought me before his final winter, the one that still smelled faintly of cedar. I pinned his compass to the inside pocket. The cracked photo frame, wrapped in a clean cloth, went into my bag. When I stepped outside, the air bit my cheeks. The town was awake in a way I hadn't seen for years. Cars lined the street, people gathered near the community hall, voices overlapping, some curious, others angry. June met me at the steps, camera crew behind her, her eyes searched mine. You ready? No, I said honestly, but I'm going anyway. Inside, the room hummed with the low static of tension. Reporters scribbled notes, residents murmured, the mayor stood near the podium like an actor preparing for an unwelcome performance. Behind him, the enlarged map of the official harbor glared down like a false witness. As I took my seat, the laughter from that first night echoed in memory, a ghostly chorus that still stung. But this time, the sound that followed wasn't laughter. It was the shuffle of people, rising to see. The mayor cleared his throat. Before we begin, he said, let's remember that civility is the heart of community. We are here to clarify misinformation circulating online. And in print, someone muttered from the crowd. He ignored it. Mrs. March, we understand you've made certain claims. Not claims, I interrupted, facts, the difference is measurable. The hall quieted, a few people clapped, hesitant but real. I stood, my legs trembling just enough to remind me I was still mortal. From my bag, I removed the photo frame, setting it on the lectern, the fracture across the glass caught the light, casting a thin shadow across the map behind him. This photograph, I said, voice steady, was taken in nineteen seventy-eight. My husband documented this harbor before most of you had voting rights. The pier in this image, the one missing from your current map, was community property until it was quietly reassigned in nineteen ninety-two. I have his submission to the council, signed and dated, I have the map metadata showing when it was altered, and I have his voice confirming both. I glanced toward June. She lifted her phone. A faint chime played through the hall. The audio from David's old recording. His voice crisp despite the years. Harbor section B, submitted for public record. The crowd stirred, heads turned toward the mayor, his smile tightened, a politician's last resort. Mrs. March, he said slowly. It's touching that you want to honor your husband's memory, but, No, I cut in, you don't get to reduce truth to sentiment. He blinked, the cameras clicked, June's livestream number ticked upward on her screen, thousands were watching now, not just Bar Harbor. He tried again. These materials were never part of official archives. Because you removed them, I said, you, or someone who answers to you. A murmur rippled through the room, someone near the back shouted, let her finish. Another voice followed, my father worked that pier, she's right. The mayor raised his hand for silence, but the tide had turned. I lifted the compass from my pocket and placed it next to the photo frame. This needle always finds north, I said quietly. Even when the map lies. For a long moment, no one spoke. The air itself seemed to wait. Then, from the doorway, a familiar voice called out, Cole Turner. He held a folder high. The metadata logs, verified, the edits were made on March eighteenth nineteen ninety-three, under the mayor's administrative code. Gasps filled the hall, the mayor's face drained of color. June captured it all, the stunned silence, the shifting eyes, the faint scrape of chairs as people leaned forward to see. For years, I'd imagined this moment as triumphant, but standing there, surrounded by flashing cameras and whispers, I felt something else, sadness. The kind that comes when truth finally surfaces and you realize how many had chosen not to look for it. The mayor muttered something about context and procedural misunderstanding, but no one was listening anymore. The town clerk stepped forward, pale and trembling. I remember those files, she said quietly. We were told to discard them after the redevelopment deal. That confession was the final wave. It didn't crash, it simply rolled over everything that tried to stand against it. I looked out over the crowd, faces of neighbors who doubted me, now stunned into silence. Mabel was there too, tears on her cheeks. She mouthed, I'm sorry. I nodded, forgiving her without words. June ended the livestream with a single closing line. Sometimes, the tide brings back what power tried to bury. Applause began hesitantly, then grew, uneven, emotional, not for spectacle but for Applause began hesitantly, then grew, uneven, emotional, not for spectacle but for relief, a community exhaling its own guilt. When it finally subsided, I spoke one last time. You can redraw a map, I said, but you can't redraw memory. It always leaks through. Then I picked up the cracked photo frame and walked out into the sunlight. Outside, the sea glittered, defiant, endless. The lighthouse beam swept across the waves like a silent witness reclaiming its duty. June caught up to me on the steps. Eleanor, she said softly, you did it. I looked at her, then at the harbor. No, I said, we just remembered. As we stood there, the town bell began to ring. Three slow chimes that carried across the water, a sound of endings or beginnings, or both. I closed my eyes, breathing in the salt air, the kind that burns before it heals. And in that stillness, I asked myself, not aloud but inwardly, now that they've heard me, will they listen? The sea, faithful as ever, answered only with the sound of another wave finding shore. The morning after the hearing, the sea was calm again. No wind, no fog, no storm, just the faint hiss of waves licking the pier that now belonged once more to the town. It looked smaller than I remembered, humbler somehow, as though it too felt the weight of being seen again. I stood there for a long while before anyone else arrived. My breath rose in thin clouds, dissolving quickly into the pale air. The harbor's water carried bits of floating debris from the night before, protest signs, coffee cups, a single soaked newspaper headline drifting like a leaf, Harbor Line Restored. That was June's headline. She'd stayed up half the night writing it, capturing everything. The documents, the confession, the faces of the council as truth uncoiled itself in front of them. The story had already been shared statewide. Some called it justice, others called it scandal. I called it overdue. June joined me a few minutes later, clutching two paper cups of coffee. Her hair was messy, her eyes shadowed with exhaustion, but her smile was genuine. They've scheduled an independent review, she said. The redevelopment deal's frozen for now. You did it, Eleanor. I sipped the coffee. It was lukewarm but comforting. We did it. You, Cole, the librarian, the few who still believe records mean something. She laughed softly. You're trending again, you know, grandmother of the harbor. I grimaced. I suppose that's better than crazy widow. Much better, she said, then, quieter. How do you feel? I looked at the horizon where the water met the faint outline of the lighthouse. Relieved, I said, but not happy. Truth had returned, but not without casualties. Cole had resigned that morning, citing irreconcilable ethics. Mabel had sent me flowers with a note that said, I should have stood with you sooner. The mayor had stepped down, temporarily for review, which everyone knew meant indefinitely. And David? While David remained gone, his voice still trapped in those old tapes that now served as evidence. Sometimes justice feels like a hollow room echoing with what it costs. When I walked through town later that day, people stopped me. Some offered quiet thanks, others awkward half-smiles. One young man approached with tears in his eyes. My father worked that pier, he said. We thought it was gone forever. Nothing's gone, I told him. Just misplaced, until someone looks hard enough. At the library, they were polishing David's memorial plaque again, scrubbing away the vandalism. The young librarian waved when she saw me. Your husband's section is being expanded, she said. We're adding the harbor files you found to the public collection. I nodded. Keep them visible. Truth fades fastest in darkness. Before leaving, I donated my cracked photo frame. The curator hesitated. Are you sure this belongs to you? It did, I said. Now, it belongs to the story. He placed it in a glass case, the fracture still visible but beautifully lit. Underneath, a small placard read, Evidence of Memory. Outside, the afternoon light softened into gold. The air smelled faintly of salt and old wood. I walked back toward the bench near the harbor where David and I used to sit. The gulls circled lazily overhead, their cries distant but familiar. I sat and closed my eyes. For the first time in months, the silence didn't feel heavy, it felt earned. Of course, the aftermath came too. The hate mail, the snide posts online accusing me of exaggeration. Power doesn't surrender without bitterness. But the town had changed, even if slightly. People were talking about boundaries, about erasure, about who gets remembered and who doesn't. That was enough. Later that evening, June called again. You've got offers for interviews, radio, even a documentary. I think I'll pass, I said. Really? After all this? I smiled. I told my story so they'd see the truth, not me. Let the harbor speak now. We talked a bit longer, about her next article, about Cole finding work in another town, about the weather. Then she said something that stayed with me. Eleanor, do you realize? You didn't just fix a boundary line, you redrew a moral one. After we hung up, I sat by the window, watching dusk bleed into night. The lighthouse blinked slowly, its beams slicing through the dark like memory cutting through denial. I opened my notebook, the one I'd rewritten from scratch, and wrote the final entry. Resolution doesn't mean peace. It means endurance. Justice isn't victory, it's continuation. And below that, a question because every chapter needs one. When truth returns to shore, what happens to those who built their homes on sand? The radio crackled faintly again, this time, no static, just soft ocean music from a late-night program, the kind David used to love. The melody wound through the room, gentle, unhurried. Certain, I whispered. We kept it, David, the line you drew. They see it now. And for a moment, I thought I heard the faintest answer in the rhythm of the waves outside. Not words, not sound even, just a feeling. Recognition. The sea, after all, remembers everything that touches it. It's been three months since the council hearing. The harbor has changed, though not in the way I once imagined. There's no parade, no victory banner, no statue of truth triumphing over deceit, just small shifts, subtle, almost invisible, the kind that make you look twice before realizing something has been restored. The old pier remains under repair, its wooden boards slowly being replaced by volunteers from the town. Children chase gulls along the shoreline where private property signs once stood. A new bench sits beside David's, engraved with a single word. Remember. Every morning, I walk the same path I've walked for forty years. The bakery owner nods now, instead of pretending not to see me. The librarian waves through the window, even Mabel, who once told me to stop, joins me sometimes, carrying two cups of coffee like an apology she no longer needs to voice. Justice, I've learned, isn't a verdict, it's a rhythm. The slow return of things to where they belong. Inside my house, the walls no longer feel like witnesses to loss. They breathe again. The cracked photo frame is gone, but in its place hangs a photograph of the harbor as it looks now. Quiet, resilient, unclaimed. The crack in the original glass has been reproduced deliberately in the print, a small detail that feels honest. Some truths are more beautiful when you let their scars show. The letter I wrote to the mayor was never returned. He resigned quietly, moved inland. Maybe he convinced himself he was right. Maybe he realized the line he crossed wasn't just on a map. Either way, I stopped waiting for apologies. There's a peace that comes when you no longer need the guilty to understand your pain. June visits, often. She's working on a series now, Women Who Remember. She insists I'm the opening story. I told her that memory isn't heroism, it's obligation. Still, I let her record my voice, because someday someone else will need to hear that persistence can exist without rage. Sometimes, late at night, I listen to David's tapes again. His voice still sounds impossibly young, steady, full of the certainty I used to borrow from him. I used to think I fought this fight for him, to honor his record, his diligence, his proof. But I see now it wasn't just about him. It was about all of us, who are told our recollections are exaggerations, our griefs are nostalgia, our truths are misinterpreted personal materials. The sea outside my window remains unchanged. Gray, restless, familiar. It doesn't celebrate, it simply endures. Last week, a young reporter asked me what I planned to do next. You've become a symbol, she said. What's your next cause? I smiled. To live quietly, I told her. And to listen, because the next story isn't mine. She looked puzzled. But she'll understand one day. There's dignity in knowing when to let silence do the talking. This morning, as I walked the pier, I saw something half-buried in the sand. An old compass, rusted and still faintly ticking. David's, perhaps, though I thought I'd lost it months ago. I picked it up, brushed off the grit and laughed softly. The needle still found north. When I looked up, the tide was rising again, reaching the line that had once been erased. Water reclaimed what belonged to it, quiet, unstoppable, without fanfare. I stood there, shoes sinking into the damp earth, and asked myself the same question I'd whispered the night of the first meeting. How many times must you be dismissed before you finally shout? The answer came softly now, not in words, but in the hush of the waves. Once is enough, if you don't stop. I closed my eyes and let the sound wrap around me. The wind, the sea, the faint clang of the harbor bell. Everything that had been taken was still here, reshaped but alive. As I turned to leave, a young girl on a bicycle passed by, calling out, Mrs. March, my mom says you saved the pier. I smiled. No, dear, the pier saved itself. I just reminded people where it stood. She laughed and rode on, her voice carrying across the water. Back home, I opened my notebook one last time and wrote a final line beneath months of entries. Truth, like the tide, always returns. Then I closed it, placed it by the window, and watched the afternoon light spill across the page. The harbor shone in the distance, calm and endless. And for the first time, I didn't need proof of anything. I'd seen the line restored, not just on the map, but in the hearts that finally looked up and saw it too. What would you have done in my place? I whispered to the quiet. The sea answered with another soft wave against the rocks. Not applause, not approval, just acknowledgement. And that, I thought, was enough.